Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the August 22, 2023 Board Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, all board members are here except for Ms. Perdue, who is excused. Now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have one presentation. We have Dr. Walsh, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, here to share with you our new teacher induction. Dr. Walsh.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening, everyone. It's my privilege to be here tonight with all of you to share our new hires that have joined the Methacton family. Over the past two days, induction was held for 21 teachers new to Methacton. Many are new to the profession, but some have experience from other districts, and we were very fortunate to be able to bring them here. Some of the topics that were shared over these past two days were topics such as pupil services supports, technology tools, human resources information, health and wellness, as well instructional techniques and strategies, supervision and evaluation, and how the various departments here at Methacton support the mission of teaching and learning. Please join me in welcoming these new staff members, including our new support staff, to the Methacton family, and you will see their profiles on the following slides. Two at Arrowhead, Madeline and Emily. We have five at Eagleville Elementary, Alyssa, Olivia, Jody, Juliette, and Sarah. Three at Woodland, Lourdes, Carly, and Haley. At Skyview, we have five, Jamie, Mary, Alexa, we will get Wesley's picture as soon as he becomes available, and Suman. At Arcola, we have two new teachers, Dana and Nicole. And at the high school, we have eight employees joining our group, Gabrielle, Sidney, Megan, Mark, Haji, Jaclyn, Sarah, and Lauren Wells. Yesterday, one of the highlights of the day was to take a tour of the district on one of our school buses to visit each of our seven schools and to see the Methacton community from the district perspective. It truly was an amazing experience to see the principals board the bus to greet the staff when we arrived at their building, and you can see some of the pictures here from yesterday afternoon. Finally, our new teachers met with their mentors this afternoon, who provided guidance and advice and will support their important work this year, and these mentors become a trusted colleague who can guide and advise them on so many aspects of our profession. We are grateful for these mentors who provide such a valuable service to our new teachers. I wanted to personally thank Dr. Sorgini and his department, as well as the myriad of administrators and staff who helped to recruit, interview, and hire these new amazing members of the Methacton family. We are all very excited to get another awesome school year underway, which officially begins tomorrow for our staff and for our students a week from today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Dr. Walsh, it's my understanding that there's at least four of our new teacher inductees that are Methacton graduates. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Excellent.
They were excited.
It's good to have those individuals come home and help grow the next generation of Methacton leaders. Any questions from members of the board? To my left, Ms. Austin?
Just while we're still at the top of the agenda, I just want to welcome those new teachers and also thank all of our teachers, current teachers and staff for getting everything ready, and our custodians and facilities for doing all that they've been doing all over the summer to get everything ready for our students next week. So, big thank you on behalf of the board.
Agreed.
Any comments or questions from members of the board? Am I right? Saying none? Thank you, Dr. Walsh.
Thank you.
And that ends our guests and scheduled speakers for this evening.
Okay, and moving on to reports, I don't think we have committee reports. There's no committee reports. North Monco, do you want to... Okay, we'll just... Yeah, North Monco, we did meet yesterday, the 21st, and they just talked about their orientation, teacher move-in happening that's ahead of their student first day, and just, you know, the regular items on the agenda. And we also reviewed the comprehensive plan, and that will be on public view on the North Monco Tech website before we submit to PDE. That was all. Anything else now? Okay, any other, anything else under reports? And Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you. So, I have no update on the Audubon Elementary School property, although as per my last report, we are still on schedule with that demolition. And then you see advisements listed on the agenda. I have two other matters for this evening. So, the first one is, as we... I just want you to know that we're prepared and excited to welcome back students on August 29th. I want to thank all the custodial staff, maintenance, grounds, secretarial staff, administrators, and everyone who had helped prepare for our opening next Tuesday. Our teacher and services scheduled starting tomorrow, as we welcome back staff, and our annual welcome back video will be released on Monday of next week. Just this week, we released a call for volunteers to sit on the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee. We seek students, parents, staff, and the greater school community participation to help provide input into recommendations to include in a comprehensive high school campus facilities plan. Methacton High School, originally constructed in 1961, has a projected replacement value of $119 million. In five years, it will have a facilities condition index of almost 60% and a projected renovations, repair, replacement cost of about $69 million. While we have been addressing facilities matters over the past several years, an updated master facilities plan is targeted to be presented to the board in September so that we can leverage that plan and the input from the planning committee to develop a comprehensive campus plan to ensure that any future investments support the mission of the district and the vision of our high school and our high school campus for the next 50 years. Yes, we are well positioned to have an exceptional year, one filled with success, growth, and achievement. I cannot be more proud of our heritage and our promise that our continued hard work and our hard work together holds. Proud to be a Methacton Warrior. Let's have an exceptional school year. The next and final report is an update on health and safety plan, so please be advised that we will be updating the Methacton Health and Safety Plan on our website as part of our grant requirements. The update simply modified dates and keep the status quo with respects to our current practices and response. Nothing has changed. We will operate as we did last school year. This is only an update to comply with the closeout of the grants. With that, that ends my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Now it's time for a public comment on board action items and opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items. Any public comment on board action items this evening?
Jim Malik-Worcester. It's funny you mention the word leverage. We'll be getting to that a little later on. Payment to the bills. Looks like June, Fidavia, $20,000. Can anybody tell me what we paid Fidavia $20,000 to do relative to, looks like, Arrowhead? Can you explain it? I mean, the school's built. 20 grand for what? And Dave, I'm sure you understand, there's been some problems with Fidavia. I got some of the emails where you weren't too happy with some of the work they're doing. So, what are we doing? Maybe you can explain that to the public. July, another $4,400. What's that about? Can you explain it? I mean, I don't get it. Doesn't make any sense. And then there's another 16 grand in July for the Arrowhead construction project for June. So, according to my figures, that's $40,000 bucks in two months. How's that work? I don't know what's going on. They do contribute to the Methacton Education Foundation. We know that because I brought that up last time. Maybe you want to look into why we're spending 40, you know, giving them 40K. Here's one for the Methacton Education Foundation at 20 bucks. What's that about? Were you reimbursing them for services or what? Do you have any idea? Maybe you could explain that to us. Looking at your Right to Know Legal, DeShale Bartle and Dooley, they came in at 20 grand for two months. So, the entire year, it's roughly $90,000. So, we went from $975 to $90,000, and nobody upfront wants to take credit for it. Nobody wants to discuss it. Nobody wants to explain it. Dave, if I saved the district 900 grand, I'd have a presentation to show how you did it. I mean, I know how you did it. You got rid of Sweet Stevens. Who's billing you in your bills here? 15, 20 grand continuously, but not for Right to Know for something else that we don't know about? So, why don't you tell the public how miraculously you go from $975 to under 100 grand? Simple. You hired a new law firm. Thanks.
Good evening. Sheila Smith, Lower Providence. I just have a quick question about the bills in general. So, when I look at them, not only this month, but in the past month, sometimes we receive revenue from the bills. Like, for instance, like the New York field trip, which again, I know that I'm just giving an example. So, and like the Planetarium, we receive revenue. We receive revenue from running out the buildings. Like, when we pay for a bill, how do we account for the revenue that we receive in addition, whether it's from the parents or the community? Because that would be helpful when we look at the bills. Thank you.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. Good evening. Several items up for vote this evening I want to comment upon. You want to continue the work of Keystone Realty, I think for another two years. I think it's appropriate that the board knows that what their performance has been in the last two years. With regard to addition of a teacher for first grade at Woodland, I think we're just at the beginning of the school year, but I think the board should be asking the administration for facts about that because we've been in a long-term enrollment decline. So, why are we adding a new position? And then, another one under personnel, item 10Q, termination of a temporary professional. With regard to that, the exact item is to approve the termination of employment of an individual as a temporary professional employee. Normally, when we hire people, they're for a specific position, you know, grade-one teacher at Woodland, for instance. So, I think when we cut back on an employee for whatever reason, I think we should indicate what position that individual held. First grade at Woodland, first grade at Worcester, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on board action items this evening? Right, seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the July board minutes as attached? Mr. McGinnis, may I have a second? Ms. Graff? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? It carries 8-0. Thank you. Next is fiscal items. Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Madam President. For the month, there are seven fiscal items. Those are the bills for June and July, the treasurer's report for June and July. There are no budgetary transfers. For the Planetarium, there's a change order for $14,500 associated with the rerouting of wiring and patching the floors, as well as welding the dome ring support. For Audubon, there is an additional contract for soil and wetland consulting required for the wetlands study at a cost of $1,680. There is also to approve a two-year extension with Keystone Realty Advisors with no changes in compensation. This is the company that helps the district with appealing underassessed properties. And finally, approve the school breakfast price of $0 and lunch price of $0 for students qualifying as reduced, similar to the program that had been, if the program had been on the National School Lunch Program for these individuals. This does not include premium meals.
Thank you. We're going to take 9A first separately. May I have a motion to approve 9A, the list of bills? Mr. McGinnis, may I have a second? Ms. Kankrow. Okay, any questions or comments on this to bills? Mr. Winters.
So, in what I provided to the board secretary today is in accordance with the Section 1103 of Pennsylvania Public Official and Ethics Act. At the public meeting tonight, it's my intention to abstain on the vote on item 9A, which involves the approval of a list of bills due to conflict of interest under the Ethics Act. The nature of interest is my wife is an instructional aide at the high school and was a chaperone for the team's trip to Louisville and is receiving reimbursement for expenses incurred.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any other questions or comments on the list of bills? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Carries 7-0-1. Thank you very much. Next, we have 9B through G. May I have a motion to approve 9B through 9G, please?
Ms. President, I'm sorry. I forgot in this... Can I ask some questions on the list of bills even though we did vote on it? Because there was some questions from the public that we haven't responded to.
Let me get this on the table, and then we'll... Yeah. A motion to approve, Mr. Ruckstuhl, thank you. And a second, Mr. McGinnis, thank you. Okay, questions or comments on 9B through G or other questions, comments?
So, there were some questions about Fidavia. Tim or Dr. Zerbi, I believe, the $4,440 is the month three agreement as an owner's rep. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the Fidavia was also hired as the owner's rep for the Arrowhead project, and the Arrowhead project is going through the closure of punch items. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, they're in line with those items. Sweet Stevens is the provider of our services for special education legal. Is that correct?
Yes.
There was a question about revenue on the list of bills, but where would one find Mr. Booker as an example, Planetarium revenue?
It would be in the finance and committee revenue report under other revenue.
And is it highlighted with a specific code that identifies Planetarium?
It is not.
No. So, maybe if we could specifically pull that one up as the example, that'd be great for future. Thank you. And then Keystone Realty, is my understanding, as the attachment says, is that Keystone Realty does not receive any money upfront. Is that correct, Mr. Booker?
Only when they are, we are successful in appealing one.
Yeah. Have we been successful in appealing anything over the last few years with Keystone recommendation?
Yes, we have.
I think that was it. Anybody have any?
Okay, any other questions or comments on those fiscal items? I actually had a question on the food service pricing because it's talking about the premium meals. Is that the, is that K to 12 or is that 7 to 12 because we're not under the, it's district-wide? And...
So, that includes the non-NSLP schools and the NSLP schools?
Okay. And then, are we... So, that is for students qualifying as reduced. And then, are we then also impacted by the proposed free breakfast program? Do we have to vote on a different breakfast price than we had voted on prior?
So, for the breakfast program, anyone that's designated as free at the high school would still be free, and anyone that's reduced would be free. Anyone that is marked as paid would still have to pay because we are not part of the National School Lunch Program. We would not get reimbursed for those meals.
Okay. So, okay, I understand. So, the free breakfast, so, but the free breakfast program does apply at the other schools that are part of it?
Correct. They're all, K to 8s under the National School Lunch Program. All breakfasts are free.
Okay. So, K to 8, and then do we have to, we did vote on those prices?
That's already done by the governor. There's no need to vote on the K to 8.
There's no need to vote on the K to 8. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Fiscal? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Those carry 8-0. Thank you. Next is Personnel. Dr. Sorgini.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam President, for the board's consideration this month. We have the following Personnel items. Two resignations professional, Destiny Bonjorno, special education instructor at the high school, and Jason Coons, art instructor at the high school. We thank Destiny and Jason for their service to the students of Methacton, and we wish them well. We have three resignations classified, Eileen Rube, part-time office assistant at Eagleville, and Sharon Ulmer, paraprofessional at Skyview. We thank Eileen and Sharon for their service to the students of Methacton, and we wish them well. And Michelle Vitelli, secretary to the principal at Eagleville, resignation for retirement. The entire Methacton family is grateful to Michelle for her six years of service to the students, staff, and families of Eagleville, and we wish her all the very best in retirement. We have two employments professional, Nicole Zuckerman, Spanish instructor at Arcola, and Hallie Wambacher, first grade instructor at Woodland. We welcome Nicole and Hallie to Methacton, and we look forward to the good work that they will do with our students. We have two employments classified, Julia Manerick, part-time reading paraprofessional at Arcola, and Jody Kohar, office assistant at Eagleville. We welcome Julia and Jody to the Methacton family, and we look forward to the good work that they will do in the years to come. We have one change of status professional, John Conran, from social studies instructor at the high school to teacher on assignment, dean of students at Skyview, and we thank John for taking on this leadership role. Three changes of status classified, Ann Hudson, from part-time paraprofessional at Eagleville to full-time paraprofessional at Eagleville. Carla Viti from recess assistant at Arrowhead to part-time office assistant at Eagleville, and Catherine Maseb from full-time bus assistant to casual on-call, and we thank Ann, Carla, and Catherine for taking on these new roles. One uncompensated leave professional, Maureen Stanko, reading specialist at Eagleville, as noted. One sabbatical leave, Rebecca Flaherty, first grade instructor at Woodland, as noted. Supplemental contracts for room movements, two fall coaches, positions in the curriculum instruction and assessment, as well as pupil services departments. Instructional software support specialist for the 23-24 school year. Activity sponsors for this school year, outdoor education, nursing, and PBIS training. Two additions to the classified substitute list, Ashley Dioguardi and Sean Brown. We welcome Ashley and Sean. And the termination of a temporary professional employee as identified. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. If it's okay, we're going to do, can I get a motion to approve items 10A to 10L, and then with that, 10N to P? So, that's omitting 10M and 10Q. So, everything except 10M and 10Q. May I have a motion? Mr. McGinnis, may I have a second? Mr. Ruckstuhl, thank you. Any questions or comments on those, 10A to L and N to P? Questions or comments? Ms. Reese?
Just to answer the member of the public's question about the teacher at Woodland, I believe that is to keep with our policy of K to 2. Is it K to 2 class size? Is that correct?
That's correct, Ms. Reese, and it's not a newly created position. It's a repurposed position.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on those? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries 8-0. Thank you. Now, we'll do 10M separately. May I have a motion to approve item 10M, please? Mr. McGinnis? And a second, Ms. Reese? Any questions or comments on 10M?
For the same reason earlier mentioned, it is my intention to abstain from the vote for item 10M or 10M7 specifically, which involves the approval of supplemental contracts due to conflict of interest under the Ethics Act. The nature of interests is my wife is an instructional aide at the high school and is co-sponsor of the National Honor Society.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on 10M? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstain? Carry 7-0-1. Thank you very much. Now we will move to 10Q. Which is the termination of a temporary professional employee. May I have a motion to approve that? Ms. Kankrow, may I have a second? Ms. Cleary? Any comments from the board?
It's not a comment, but could we have a definition of a temporary professional employee?
Sure. A temporary professional employee is a, generally a teacher who has not yet received tenure. So has not received the number of satisfactory evaluations to earn tenure typically over a three-year period.
Anything else from the board? Okay. We're going to do a roll call vote here. And Ms. Kankrow?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary? Thank you.
Here we go.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue is not here. Ms. Reese?
No.
Mr. Ruckstall?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that motion 7 to 1. That motion carries 7 to 1 then. Thank you. And now curriculum and programs.
Thank you, Ms. President. I can take that one this evening. Up for the board's approval is the new independent STEM research curriculum for the 23-24 school year. This course was approved last fall and the new curriculum document was up for public inspection from July 26th through August 22nd for its 30-day inspection. It was reviewed by one individual on August 9th with no comments being left after the inspection. And that's all for this evening under curriculum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve item 11A, new curriculum? Mr. McGinnis? May I have a second? Ms. Reese, thank you. Any questions or comments under new curriculum? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries 8-0. Thank you very much. Next, policy. Doesn't look like there's anything under policy. So we're on to other. Dr. Zerby?
Thank you, Madam President. Under transportation, we approve the following drivers as part of the transportation employee roster for the 23-24 school year as listed. And then under 13D, approve the district dentist. Approve the appointment of Dr. Sheldon Barachow as a school dentist. Retainer fee, examination fee of $2 per student effective 23-24 school year.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve all items listed under other? Ms. Kankrow, may I have a second? Mr. Ruckstall, thank you. Any questions or comments under other? All in favor? Any opposed? Carries 8-0. Thank you. Now we're on to dates for board member calendars. Our committees are back in session in September. And do we have any old or new business to discuss? Seeing none, it is time for courtesy of the floor and opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and we will, may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of comments.
Jim Malik-Worcester. So I get, so I understand $32,000 for a punch list? That's it? And the amounts are the same for each month? I don't think that's coincidental. And that's an awful lot for a punch list. At the last meeting, I read an email regarding Dr. Zerby making the ask and securing a $15,000 donation from Fidavia for the Methacton Education Foundation. The email chain included the following. "Thanks, Dr. Zerby. This is great news and a perfect example of how we need to leverage existing relationships." That's why I thought, oh, Dave's talking about leverage up there again. I got other examples for you, though. According to the MEF board meeting minutes, the board needs to think about how to bring new board members into the loop and to grow and leverage relationships. So that's what the foundation discusses at their board meetings. And then the executive director report says, "Connect with Chamber on how to leverage network for the above campaign." So there's a lot of leveraging going on around here. Now, my question is, did that leverage include principals, teachers, students, and their families? You know, you talked about back to school. I got an email from the foundation director to you, Dave, titled "Foundation Flyers with Packets from School." The foundation director stated, "I wanted to see if it's possible for the foundation to include a flyer highlighting the foundation awards in the back-to-school packet that the district mails out. If it's okay with you, I would provide those in the packet. The foundation will emphasize the grant we've awarded to demonstrate the impact we've made on students in Methacton." There would not be an ask in the flyer. Rather, it will lay the groundwork for our ask that we will send out via direct mail." So now we're using students and their families now? Is that the, is that the leverage we're doing, Dave? Another one has to do with an email from, to you from Amanda. "I completely forgot to ask if the principals can share info about the foundation in their back-to-school presentation this year." You respond, "Amanda, please distribute to principals and ask them to include it in their virtual back-to-school night presentations." What is, what is that, Dave? You're the superintendent of Methacton. You know, me personally, I don't think we should be leveraging students, teachers, principals. And this is a small, I have more. This is a small smattering of what's going on. My opinion's not good.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Good evening, Sheila Smith, Lower Providence. As the new year, as the new school year approaches, I want to discuss several topics around finances, to be quite honest. One is, are we using local tax dollars? You had mentioned about the dentist and I know there's a medical provider plus mental health resources. Are we using local tax dollars to pay for that rather than health insurance? Because students have health insurance, whether it's private or through CHIP. So that's one question that I have. Then also, I just want to talk about the budget. So, you know, in June, we approved, you got, not we, you approved 126, 585,115 million-dollar budget, up $8 million despite declining enrollment. So that led to a 3.15% increase despite the capital reserves and the $13 million surplus. So in addition, on August 11th, Senator Bradford, excuse me, Representative Bradford shared that Methacton would receive an additional 11.3 million, up 7% increase. So is the budget going to be updated to reflect that funding and where's all this money going? So it was interesting, I spoke with several teachers over the summer and one English teacher over in Methacton High School had to get a chair out of the dumpster and was using that. And a student felt so badly that his family purchased a new chair. So I'm just trying to understand the money. I mean, we all understand that last meeting, Dr. Zerby, you received a significant pay increase, a $20,383 increase for four years. And I, I was just a little bit, I didn't understand why. I mean, we look at our rankings, we declined 37 points. Our students did not meet standards. So I'm just, we haven't met standards for the language arts, math, English, literature. The ninth graders failed and had to retake the algebra. You know, right now, we're up to $27,487 per student. That's $10,000 more than the country average and $17,000 more. So I just, I would encourage the board to really think, this is an opportunity for us to go back and look at our operational expenses. Look at our admin ratio. When I look at the budget, there's 31 admin positions in the building. Yeah, I know you're looking at the clock. And I thought we had four minutes. Oh, three?
Great, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor this evening? Seeing none, any other comments from board members this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. McGinnis and a second? Ms. Graff? Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.